Okay, it's five o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. And the first item up is approval of the agenda. Does anything need be changed or added?
May have approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, we have an agenda. And we'll move directly into approval of the board minutes. And you'll see on there, there's four sets. Probably had time to look over them by now.
Will approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any last words? I think everybody was here, right? Okay. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, we have the minutes approved. And that rushin' as hard as I can get to you, Joe. So that takes us directly into a discussion on coaches' pay. Mr. Cock.
I understand this is information only.
Okay.
Back in March, I believe I came to the board and requested a 5% raise. And you rightly so said make it 10. Of course, that was before the budget came out. And I felt I better meet with the athletic director. So I met with them on April 29th to get their input and invited all of them to a meeting. And went through what they wanted or would like to see happen. And then I listed in the order that they'd like to see it done. First item was they would like to see their athletic directors, and this was middle school and high school, supplement scale be moved to the same as the head football coach. The AD scale is fairly low. And so they asked it to be moved up. And according to my estimates, I took last year's South contracts and used those. And the difference would be around $7,000 if we went to that. They then asked for an increase in coaching supplement of 10%. Again, this is estimate cost of mine, the $34,000 may be low. And we have to pay benefits. Ms. Harold would be the better one to give a exact. I just again took last year's coaching supplements and looked at each one of them and added them up. But they asked to increase the high school football coaches, and again, this was the four middle school ADs were there, increase theirs 15% instead of the 10% because they felt like they did so much more work. And I listed that because that was one of theirs. You know, the head football coach, in my opinion, he gets paid a stipend for weightlifting. He has the opportunity to do a stipend for two fields. And if we increase those 10%, plus the 10% for the regular one, and increase the field cost, which is the next item, they're gonna have a pretty healthy increase for the head football. Would not affect the assistance.
Right.
But, so that's what they asked for as step two.
Joe, is the $34,000 you got there, does that include the 15% or is that all 10?
The 34 includes just 10. And I did not do the 15% because I didn't agree with it. But thought I needed to present it to you. Infield care, the field care increased 350 per field. Most high schools have four to five fields. Middle schools are looking at three each, so it's 350 depending on which school for each field.
Is that per season? Because at some of your high schools, a year.
That's for a year. If I cut the baseball field right now at Washington High School or Northside, Southside, I'm gonna get $400 for 12 months. If you give me a $350 raise, that's gonna be 750 for the year. Taking up, picking up that field, wanna take care of weed eating, cleaning the lines or whatnot, if we need weed killer or whatnot, cutting the grass, making sure it's fertilized. And I do that for the entire year. So we're going from 400 to 750 per field for an entire year.
Now, at Washington, their football field is used for more than football. So how does that play into this?
One person gets, between the athletic director and the principals, their decision who they're gonna allow to cut it. I believe at Washington High School, sport gets paid to cut the football field and the practice field, as does each football coach at each high school. And that was part of, at one time, the head football coach got paid all field care. The county did not receive a stipend for cutting the fields before we merged. And we were doing it, they were getting 500 in 1980. And when we merged, it got cut to 400. And then the other ones started getting it also.
So whoever maintains, let's say it's sport, but whoever maintains the field, are they expected to also then maintain it for the soccer? Spring and, you know, because you have soccer there, spring and fall.
Right.
So are they, that increases?
Sport is required to keep the field.
Maintain the field for whatever sports be in play.
As is Southside's football coach and Northside's.
Okay.
Okay, so that was field care.
So that's $750 regardless to how many times they cut the field?
That's correct. If they fertilize it, they're gonna have to cut it at least three times a week. And they have to fertilize it to get it growing if they wanna have a nice looking field to start the season. If you get a chance to ride by and look at the fields, they take a lot of pride in them.
Oh, absolutely.
That's a lot of work.
I just felt like in that instance, there's a lot more maintenance that potentially could be involved because you've gotta maintain it for springs force.
That's true. Well, they just have to cut it. They don't.
They don't have to line it or anything?
No. Each coach lines his field, it takes care of his area. If I'm the wrestling coach, I'm gonna roll the mat out. If I'm volleyball, I'm gonna make sure the net's right.
Okay.
Proper, you know, the head coach gets a little bit more money. And depending on the sport, usually if there's a field involved, if you look at the stipends, it's a little bit higher to be a baseball coach than a volleyball coach. Because they do have to line off the field and get everything right before each game.
Right, okay.
Okay, they asked to be paid $25 for driving a bus for an away game. That was one of their requests. They felt like they should be compensated for driving. I told them I would take it to the board, and I have. My estimate on going from last year's away games, $25 per away game was $11,450.
Now, if they don't drive, are we paying somebody else?
Only one person would be paid to drive, whoever's driving the bus.
And how much is that person paying?
Do you mean right now?
Yes.
Nothing. No one's paid anything.
This is to pay somebody to drive a bus.
So no one's being paid to drive any buses at any time?
Anytime you have a bus driver paid is if, for whatever reason, the coach does not have a bus license or a CDL license, and they have to pay a bus driver to drive the bus to the away game for the team.
Okay.
Then they are paid the regular rate.
I didn't realize nobody was getting paid.
Which is fairly high.
Right.
That's a lot of responsibility for $25.
It sure is.
Most of the time now, they don't use a bus driver because the bus drivers are having to drive buses when the team's leaving to go to a ballgame, so they're using other coaches. So if, say, Northside, the volleyball coach doesn't have her, their license, then a basketball coach or cheerleading coach or somebody else has to go drive for them. That person's going away from their sport or away from their time, where their family to drive the bus with nothing to get out of it.
There's something better than nothing, right?
25 for one trip isn't much either.
That's right.
Depending where you go in Manio or.
Right. The total looks like a lot, but when you consider the responsibility, I wouldn't want to do it.
When you take each trip and add it up, it adds up to around 11,500. Lastly, they asked to increase the steps from, we have the president have a scale with zero to 20. And they want to increase it from 20 to 30, which is really 29, like a teacher's scale. That would only affect about four or five individuals right now that have 20 years of experience. We at one time were on a 30-step scale, and it was reduced to 20 to try and give them a raise without giving them a raise. So they're asking to go back and add those other ones in there. And like I said, we do not have, I went through and looked at it, and we had about, see if I wrote it down here, left it on my desk. We only had about, Keith Boyd, who's been at Northside for a long time, he's only at 17, coaching varsity football, I think. And Mike Proctor is at 32. Southside, I don't think, had anyone, there's maybe a guy who had transferred in, was assistant football, was right at 18 or 19. But there's very few that are gonna be at 20 or higher. So that was their request from the meeting to do one first, do the rest of them if there was money. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
Just a few comments I'd like to make. I've been talking with Joe about this for, what, six months or better? And he told me, which I didn't realize when we first started talking about it, that our coaches have not had a supplement increase since 1992. Is that correct?
I think it was the year we merged. 91?
91.
91, 92, somewhere in there.
I don't remember where it was.
Other than when we went from 30 to 20. That was sort of an increase.
Yep.
94.
If you compare them, we paid to some of the counties, which I know you don't have to pay just because other counties pay.
We're extremely, we've always been low. When I came here, we were low.
Yep. We're not even in the game with them at all.
Even with these increases, it don't even get us close to a lot of neighboring counties what they're paying. But, you know, I think it would show some appreciation to our coaches that if we could give them some type of increase.
Well, this conversation's been needed to have, so at least we started it.
My recommendation would be to give, if it's only 5%, and try to, I know you can't do it down the road, but if you can give 5%, go with the mindset, we're gonna do this every year for.
To get it there.
Till we get to where they need to be, rather than try to come in and give it all at once.
I did look at some, not just neighboring counties, but counties that are even smaller than us, and we're even below some of them, which was embarrassing. And knowing just firsthand how much time they put into it, and there's, I don't know of anybody that's coaching for the money. You know, they're coaching because they love the sport and they're dedicated to these kids, and we can at least show appreciation for it.
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks. We'll, let's look over it.
Okay, do we have another thing for me to do in close session?
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate your work. Okay, first action item is Mark. He's up.
Good afternoon. We are, what you have in your packet is a quotation for the renewal of our Microsoft Enterprise Education Agreement. This software bundle effectively drives everything we do in Botha County with regards to technology, except for a few of the cloud offerings and some of the Apple or Chromebook offerings. But it drives a significant amount of what we do with regards to technology for software. This would be the fourth year that we'd be renewing this. The first time we did it, we did a three-year option. What I'm asking the board, if possible, and I've talked with Ms. Harold, we're still working on the final FTE numbers, which is how it's funded by staff and students, excuse me, staff and teachers. And this 950 was based on three years ago, and I know that's come down. So this figure will come down, but I'm asking if the board would allow us, if we were able to look at the three-year option, if we could get either Ms. Harold or Dr. Phipps to sign that in the month of August as a three-year option, instead of using a one-year option, if we could tie in some pricing for the next three years. And Ms. Harold has indicated that the contract would need to be specific in the fact that as money is available in those years two and three. But also, this is basically an operational expense that we cannot ignore.
Right.
Because this is a half have.
Yes, sir. And when we look at it, we evaluate it and determine as we go through it, like as we go forward and we start probably getting a larger impact, Chromebooks and things like that, there's gonna be a breakpoint maybe of when we can buy these packages à la carte and actually own the product. But what this allows us to do is continuously upgrade with the latest and greatest office and operating system and things like that. It's, we really get good pricing, especially on things for like our data center edition, $270 for a data center edition of Microsoft. And it's usually probably $3,000 or $4,000 for businesses, a tremendous deal, so.
Is this the same company we've been working with?
Yes, ma'am. SHI has the contract, the state contract for the enterprise agreement.
And there is a potential savings if we sign the three-year or just it prevents it from going up?
Well, what happens is Microsoft will every once in a while change their licensing. For instance, I'm probably gonna bore you in a second here, but they're going from a core model to a specific, more core model with their newer pricing, and it could be more expensive to license some of these options. But I don't think it'll be enough of a difference once I maybe get the pricing that it might matter if we do the three-year option. But I just wanted to know if it was that, if I could get permission. If not, we'll just go ahead and do the one year and proceed as normal.
Is the three-year paid annually or is it paid at one time?
This amount is paid annually.
The amount we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
So we wouldn't be coming up with $180,000, $190,000 to pay three years?
No, ma'am.
You'd pay still out in three years.
That's correct. You would pay, you would pay this amount, and then we'd, you know, we'd look at it again next year. And I could drop some things from it. I can't change the FTE count on it though, because that's throughout the contract life for 850, whatever it would be. But it could be that we could reduce some of the other things. But most of those we need, we're very, we're pretty tight on what we have here anyway with regards to what we use.
But basically, you're just asking us, this is the annual amount to give you approval to seek out for three years to see if it's less than three times this, but it won't be more than that?
No, it will not be more than this. That's correct.
Will approve, Mr. Chair.
And once we approve it, then it's just between you and Ms. Harold, right?
And Dr. Phipps, too, yes.
But you're asking for that approval?
Yes, that's correct.
We're giving them up to three years of what we have in front of us.
It sounds pretty good.
Makes sense.
Because we have to do this final negotiation in the month of August, and I didn't wanna get to the last board meeting and then have an issue.
Right, that's what I was gonna say, three years not to exceed the amount we have in front of us. That's why I was asking you to be that.
As per year.
Per year, right.
Yes, okay.
That's where John came up with the 195.
Right.
Yeah. Sometimes when you do that, they want it up front.
Okay, well, I have a motion to approve. I hear a second?
Yes.
You got it already? Any other last questions? Somebody just spoke, I think somebody just spoke in.
That was the third.
That was the third. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Waiting for the thunder to hit. Okay. Didn't oppose that time.
I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. It is, the weather's bad to the north of us, really bad.
Let's hope it stays to the north at least a while longer.
Thank you.
Not trying to wish the people north of us any bad luck. Stan Hudson, got some Capitol update information and quite a few pictures, and I guess you must be gonna tell us something about these pictures.
Yes, sir. Just give you a brief update of what's been completed so far in our summer.
What do you want us to open first? There's so many tabs.
Capitol update.
Capitol update tabs.
Southside pool of windows have been repaired. The work was completed by Glass Tech at Greenwood, an amount of $7,834.
Stan, will you put, if you remember, to put the bid amount on that line?
Yes. Ms. Jody's been out, and that's why, I asked for updated sheets so I could update my numbers, but in the future, I will continue.
Right, yeah.
Southside VCT in rooms G138, 152 were replaced, and it was covered by Design of Washington in an amount of $4,429.75. Southside soundproofing in the band room was completed by PC Sound of Washington in the amount of $19,998.5, and it made great differences in the ring.
Did it make a lot of?
Yes, sir. Band director and I were in there yesterday, and it made big difference in the ring.
Not a moment too soon.
Yeah. Northside VCT in rooms 101, 103, 201, 203, or 202, 203, and the cafeterias have been completed and was installed by GW Walker &amp; Son in the amount of $28,650 bucks. Northeast Elementary Media Center carpet has been completed. A joint effort between GW Walker and Plan Ops put all those bookshelves back, but it did a good job, and it was completed in an amount of $11,046. And there's another note now related to Capitol, as Northeast Elementary's walking trail has been completed, and that was paid for by KB Renters.
Any questions about the completed projects? No, I took that and just cross-referenced 2 to 15, 16, which clears up a lot of projects, in other words.
A lot of projects.
And plus the summer that you're getting ready to tell us about.
There was two in the 14, 15 that we've been carrying over. The Northside light guards and automotive, and that classroom, they were installed by Plan Ops electricians. The cost of the guards were $2,108.97. Northside had been already upgraded to T8 fixtures, so that's why there's quite a bit of difference in the monies between the two. It wouldn't really have that much more fixtures. And by switching Washington High School to T8 fixtures and light guards, we were able to cut the lights back, the actual amount of lights. So that's why that number's not so drastic or two. But Plan Operations completed installation in the masonry, carpentry, and agriculture shops in the amount of $3,0269.22. And that cleans up the old jobs.
Yeah.
Anything that was out there.
That's good.
Current jobs that are underway right now is SW Snowden, locker rooms and restroom renovation. This work is being done by GW Walker &amp; Son. The demo is complete, and they're actually gonna start putting tile back tomorrow. Eastern Elementary multipurpose building, we had our final punch list last Thursday. MHA's completed a package, and I got it today at our groundbreaking ceremony. Our warranty's actually started on 7/29/16. So there are, there's one or two issues. There's motion detector bad in the bathroom that's a warranty issue. And there's one overhead light in the gym that was shipped defective, but we're waiting on a warranty replacement on it to finish that up.
Any questions about our work done?
Are those drain lines on the, I guess it's the west side of that building, are they gonna stay like that?
No, sir, we're gonna do it. We're getting adapter boots and put them down and put them out there. They will be done by Plan Ops. Any other questions? Very nice facility, hope y'all enjoy.
Yeah, it was.
Show up and do it. Hope they enjoy it. I'm seeking action on tonight is the Eastern Elementary Pod 1, 2, and 3 enclosure. We had our pre-bid meeting on 7/20. We had four general contractors at 10:00 on 8/28/16 at 2:00 p.m. We had our bid opening, the low bidder was Stokks and Taylor. This was all conducted by MHA Works. Base bid was $205,000, $205,400, and an alternate bid of $18,500 for the handicap door operators with single-button remotes. It is my recommendation that Botha County Schools enters a contract with Stokks and Taylor of Washington to be able to design enclosure at Eastern Elementary in the amount of $223,900. This would include the handicap alternate bid.
And Lisa found the $18,500 was on the back of the contract, it didn't print on here, and you got that, Boris?
Excuse me?
Yeah, I just have an F5, but it's on here now. So the total was the $223,900?
Yes, sir.
Stan, where does that, I think I asked this question in an email or text. We did $34,000 in design?
Yes, sir.
And then we, that didn't include what we've already done, the enclosure part, right?
Not in the previous.
Well, how much was that?
23.
Okay, so we're still coming in.
We're still under our 300, yes, sir.
That should put us about $25,000 underneath.
Underneath our projected 300.
We talked about it, I need to expedite the schedule and can you?
Well, they're ready to start the work tomorrow. They're actually wanting to bring the glass company to start taking down the existing glass wall, and they want to start demo as soon as we can get contracts signed.
Well, if it gets approved in a few minutes, we'll sign it tonight before we leave. Go ahead and tell us about the EdTech, and we can just take a vote on both of them at the same time.
Very good. EdTech cafeteria door project is the door, we wanted to raise the door. I met with structural engineer, Mr. Mark Roy, and he's actually done some other workforce there at Eastern, and he's here in Washington. He gave us a quote, not to exceed 800, to do the design of how to properly move the door frame and do the support of the wall. And what it is, it's a cantilevered porch. About 15, I looked at it, it's actually made into the building. And it is the lintel, it's the whole support there, and it's a porch that comes out. So then, once we raise the door, then we'll have to do a little awning above it, too, would be a part of the project. But we need to have this step before we can actually determine the true cost of fixing the door.
And we had, if I'm looking at it right, went $3,400 set aside.
Set aside, that's correct. Yes, sir. So we're just asking permission to spend $800 of the $3,400.
Were those the set of doors we already have?
We have the doors and frame to go there, yes, sir.
So what expense would be left?
Then a mason to come in to do the block work, whatever structural steel may be, have to put in for lintels, interior and exterior, because we have a block wall and exterior, masonry wall. So whatever he designs there says needed for load calculations, so.
You're not gonna?
But I won't know till I get a design, yes, sir. We gotta raise it eight inches, so.
Some would work. Any have any questions on those projects? Before we take a vote or consider taking a vote? Okay, what's the board?
So the doors are gonna knock off that much of the projected funds that we have for that?
Yeah, he's already got the door. He already had the doors.
I know that, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, we got $3,400 set aside, but he's asking you for 800 tonight. And once they write the design, then we'll know.
Then we can see what it's gonna take to actually put the doors in. It may be less than what we have budgeted, it may be more, may have to come back and ask for some more money. But I won't know till we have a design and get some prices from some local people to what has to be done.
But we can't ask for a bid out till we know what we need.
I gotta have a scope.
What's the timeline on both of those? How quickly can they get that door? Is that gonna be done before school starts at EdTech?
It can possibly be done. He said he could turn it around within a week and have my design back, so then we could put it out and see if we can get it.
Good.
What our budget threshold number is, it should be under it, so we should go and make it do.
And with Stokks and Taylor wanting to start right away, what's their turnaround time?
They're hoping they can get the concrete cut out and all concrete put back before the start of school.
But that.
The walls will not be, the walls got a long lead. They can put, the actual aluminum structure itself could be put in place, as they could start building it once the concrete is put back. But then they have to order all the glasses after the aluminum is in place.
Is that gonna be done off-site? Are they gonna build those structures on-site? You know, some of what?
It just comes together and snaps like a big tinker toy set and locks together. Once they start cutting it, it just literally snaps together.
Because it's gonna shut down the use of those sidewalks.
Yeah, we worked through it before to get it done during the school days, when they're in between their classes and stuff. Ms. Dana worked with their schedule.
Shouldn't take them that long to put the framework up.
That's it.
I wouldn't think, but.
And then the glass can be put in after hours. The glass just comes in and it basically snaps in, too, so.
They could use those sidewalks without the glass, as long as the framework has been finished.
That's the plan. That's what we had a little pre-meeting, but we want to have another one Thursday morning. If y'all approve the contract, proceed. But then, we have a meeting at 8:30 Thursday morning with the contractors and Ms. Dana and MHA to do our final.
And you've impressed upon them the urgency?
Yep, they know. Seven, Mr. Taylor, Seven Taylor has a son at the school that's involved there, so he's very aware of the situation and routing of the children and.
So we've got a reason to prod him along.
That's it.
Okay, alright. Any other questions? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion on both of these projects.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, have a motion. Did I hear the second over there too?
Yeah, Ms. Dana.
Any last questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, don't let us forget, we'll, we'll sign everything before we leave and get you working.
Alright.
Get somebody working, how about that? What do you got here, notification of new issues?
We had a few issues.
I think I know what they are, but I rather you say them.
Well, Washington High School modular unit, this is going, we're gonna have to add to our sixteen seventeen capital. Um, the BCT is coming loose in the room. We had several small-scale issues in the past, um, we've had moisture and stuff. Um, when the custodial staff started to refinish the floor, when they went in to sweep the room, the tiles just came up. There's two pictures attached of G one thirty, I mean, W one thirty-eight, one thirty-six. They're just completely loose, they're unadhered from the particle board. So, um, talked to two different people, um, about ways to fix it and we can potentially go in and take the tile out, um, put a felt paper down and then a hardboard down so we can re-adhere VCT or carpet, depending on what y'all choose to go with in the future in the modules. The floors are pretty sound in those.
We fixed the issues where they were so soft.
Yes, ma'am, that's been fixed. But now it's what it is, is the sand has got under the glue and we think it's from the custodians in their process of stripping the floors and leaving the stripper down there, and it's just completely released it from that OSB board, is loosened the glue.
You don't think there's any moisture issue underneath them?
We checked it, it was like, it was like twenty-two percent. We've been underneath the modular and underneath is dry, so there's nothing underneath, all the plastic's in, 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 in place, um, all insulation's in place, so.
But you don't have a?
It'll be a patch, but it would be something we need to add to our sixteen seventeen capital.
Did you just say the tile's on OSB board?
Yes, sir. Three-quarter inch OSB single.
Well, that's your problem right there.
Exactly.
Yes, that's, and you, it is a patch, cause you will never fix that, you replace it.
Yeah, it'll keep coming.
It'll keep doing.
And is that, uh, cause I looked at the picture, so is that something you're gonna try to address prior to the start of school?
If y'all approve me a sixteen budget and let me spend some money, yes, ma'am.
But is there a price attached?
Well, we're gonna do that later tonight. I didn't know what to proceed from, we just found out yesterday.
Oh, so we don't?
Nothing, it's no action, it's just information.
This is just information.
No, this is notification.
Notification.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
Notification.
Not information, notification.
We're foreseeing issues. The next one we're planning to fix in our plant operation, general maintenance bus in Washington High School. Um, we discovered a major leak outside the concrete of the entrance from the left side between the school and there.
Go back and see the pictures.
Um, we were able today to locate the pipe, we have not located the leak. Um, the plan showed there'd be a valve between the school and performance arc, we dug a place thirty-foot wide and a hundred and twenty-some foot long, and we never located a vertical upright for a cutoff valve. So we've ordered some valves where we can put in and cut and glue in, it is PVC, but we will put a valve outside performing arc so we can isolate it. And we think this may be our leak that we've had in our pit, cause it's right at the highest point of the property, and we think we've had it been going to the pit prior to, and since we finally got the pit sealed up, we think the water's found a new way out, outside the yard, so this may be in a long-term leak we may have had. Russ is, and Mr. Pete's pulling the, um, water, the water bills to see if we've had any spike recently or anything in depth, see if we can find out where our water's been going. This next one is one that y'all heard of plenty of times, CPS modular. Um, we have one there and they have a picture of the campus attached in there of the three trailers, it's the very back one, the one that had the cloud drawled around. Um, it is in poor, poor condition, state of non-repair.
Are they able to move those four classrooms to the other ones?
Yes, sir.
Has she found places for them?
Well, she can do it, there'll be some classroom sharing, I think going on with some teachers, some, some teachers that come in at certain times, work with certain kids, but it would take some scheduling, but.
She can work it out?
I think she can, she says she can, but, um, it is in very, very bad shape, I can read your tape, but we actually, the custodians were there to start, they're cleaning, to get ready, and leaned against the wall and his hand went through the wall. That's when he called us and I went over and it's over seventy percent moisture in the interior wall. So, exterior wall, there's two pictures attached of the exterior wall, it is OSB, OSB board.
Same stuff.
Exterior, and it's twenty-six years, twenty-seven.
You don't have to tell me.
It's aged out, it's just time, it's something that everything goes on with it, they've overlooked the life, there's no eve, there's no overhangs.
I nearly pushed through it about three, four months ago, so you don't have to tell me what it's like, it's in terrible.
We.
Donald was gone, I haven't really looked at them that close, I just happen to be on the backside of the one he's talking about, and it's terrible. Uh, and we're not gonna decide tonight on that, as far as what to do with it, but what would you think down the road, we decide, we're not gonna be using it, what are we gonna do with it?
It needs to be.
Nobody's.
It's gonna eventually develop mold, conditions get right, it's being cool enough, kept cool enough now that we, we need to move out of it and condemn it.
But you don't need approval from us on anything here, just work it out with her to get the classrooms out.
Correct. Then I may approve you all to get it removed in the future.
Just come back to us when you think we need to get rid of it and how's the best way to do that?
Once we get out of it.
Cheapest way for us to get rid of it, somebody take it.
I know we've talked about this before, and we've talked about trying to get away from modules. I think this is just proof in the pudding right now, that, you know, you might as well just take the money and open that door and just throw it right out there, cause they are, they're sorry, they've served their purpose.
And these are beyond where I would start repairing them anymore. No more, throw any more good money after this thing.
The floor is very soft in that, in this particular unit.
Yeah, okay. Well, work with the principal to get those classrooms out and come back to us and tell us what you wanna do with it.
Alright.
I don't think you'll have a problem with us. Um, well, let's see, actually I got your name on the next item too, you handling that, Stan, the sixteen seventeen budget, or you and Don together?
We'll talk through it. We went through this in the last meeting just to give you an idea, to put some recommendations down, and ask you to take a look at it and see if you had any feedback. And what Terry asked us to do, the first attachment that you have is the actual capital budget proposal, it has all the items on it, that came up to a total of one point eight million, and we highlighted in yellow the things that we, that we took out of there. And the process that we went through, we had about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to work with, and we tried to go through and, and make sure that we were doing something that was representative across the county, uh, and then also some system-wide projects like asphalt, and you see that reflected. The, what we did keep intact from the original conversations were the safety and security issues, which includes that, that camera and camera system upgrade of three hundred thousand, total of about nine hundred thousand to do the whole work, we were gonna phase it in over three years. We retained three hundred thousand there, we can scale that back if we have to do something in an area, but I felt like we had to keep, we told the commissioners we would, keep the egress doors and the things that we were talking about for security in the building as our top priority, and we have those listed. And then we've gone through and, and obviously if we've got a hundred and thirty-two thousand to spend, the other items are, are smaller dollar items, but they're things that we feel like need to be done.
So what you're saying is anything in yellow highlighted are items that we are going to do if the board approves?
Right.
Right, if you see, if it's not in, if it's not highlighted, then it's not gonna be done if you approve this.
And, and another way of looking at it will be on the next attachment, and that's where I had broken out for you, just those items, and then we had, uh, just for you to see the items that were on hold for the Eastern Elementary enclosure, and then projects that came in over budget if you wanted to consider those, but, uh, the recommendation would be what you see in yellow there.
And as far as the safety, I know we keep talking about the cameras, but I think, and Matt made a good point last meeting, we don't wanna be changing anything there, especially without the commissioner's approval, and especially until we know exactly what all the previous items above there will, will make. I say just leave all that safety, security just like it is, and let's see what we can work out, cause we don't know what the bids will come in, and then we'll know when we get through with the work, we'll know what money we have. Cause we can always add a project later, you can always add.
If there's a savings, as long as it's still within capital, let's say something is budgeted at twenty thousand and it comes in at fifteen, we can still use that remaining five, but does it have to still be capital, Ms. Harold?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, unless you go back to the county commission and they approve moving it to your operating budget.
Which we probably wouldn't wanna do since there's so many, at that point, we've got so many other projects that were taken off, we can add one back in based on a, a need ba-, you know, priority.
A capital project back in, right.
Right.
And if you look at this, you'll see somehow a capital item and then a recommended capital for sixteen seventeen, the dollar figures may be different. An example would be a tailor, uh, where it says replace bathroom fixtures in six bathrooms. When we looked at that, we said we could scale that back to three and get started on it, but only do three, and that's why that's half the cost. And there was another one on the next page, if you go down, and that was just looking at what we had originally planned and scaling those back.
Plus remember, every time we say we save some money, it's nice to always have the fund balance, because I can assure you, between now and July, or June of next year, something will go wrong somewhere in a school that we are not anticipating, and we'll need money for it, so. Emergencies, I guess, and Stan can then come and notify us of that.
That's it.
Okay, well, I have no problem with the way it's set up, because there's only so many ways you can spend a hun-, I'm showing it a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. There's only so many ways you can spend a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, I mean, when you're talking about projects that cost twenty and thirty thousand dollars apiece, so.
Correct.
What's the board think?
Um, I don't have a problem with, I guess my, um, my initial concern is, you know, the principals at these schools are always very grateful for whatever we do to improve things at their school, you know, so I wanna say that first, they're always very grateful for anything that they get in the way of an improvement. But I would, I would wanna know that, and we're trying to spread it around so everybody's getting a piece of the very small pie we're working with, but I'd wanna know that the principal feels like out of the things we ask for, that would be at the top of my priority list. Is that too much to ask? Cause I'm not at these schools, and I would, I'll just pull one out, uh, Northside Electrical Outlets, um, did you spell on this?
Where is it? Which, what school are you at?
I'm at one where Electrical Outlets for Northside High School in room two oh seven, it says six thousand dollars. I don't have a problem with that and I don't.
That's one of his main things, he's been with it the last two years.
That was my point, is if, if Charles said, I need that more than I need anything, because that has been a real issue.
I don't think he's gonna say anything, but it's been one of his projects for the last two years, they actually already have the computers and do not have outlets to run them.
So I would just wanna know that we're doing the most we can for these schools in what their priorities are, cause I don't know what their priorities are.
I get a list, when we start on this capital list, we request it, we send an email out to all principals and their list, and that's what we work from, so it's on his priority list, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I know some of that's a wish list, and between the time they submitted that to now, that may have changed, cause on one of the tours, I know a principal said, I know I didn't put this down, but I really need this, you know, so things do change.
On the Northside list, it says some HVAC system in ag classroom, I thought we just approved it last night.
It is, it was, it was supposed to be removed.
Oh, okay.
It was in the, the ag classroom is on the fifteen sixteen.
That's what I thought.
It's supposed to be done in the next two weeks.
Yeah, project instead of any others, I mean, they.
Okay. Uh, there is one other thing that I want to have some information thrown at us real quick. Pete, do you mind coming up and giving us that information on the chiller or towers? I don't think it's gonna fit into here, cooling towers at Washington High School, but he's got some information to share with us on that. I'm not sure the cost would fit in here at all, but.
Yeah, let me just make, uh, one comment, I'm probably following some of the same information you've already got here, in your capital project sheets. Let me point out, uh, it's, it's on my last page, I don't know where it's at, but on yours, but under performance contract, items that you have listed for performance contract, the cooling towers are listed, uh, under that heading, and I have found, we have found out that we cannot do this project under a performance contract. And the reason for that is because under a performance contract, the savings that is created from the project has to pay for the project, and so the cost of the project is gonna far outweigh the savings that you realize it'd take too long to do it that way. So we've been told that this, you know, it can't be done under a performance contract, and the amount there, the estimated cost, that is an actual quote, but it's excessively high. And so we, if you see that, and if I looked at that, I'd say, well, I know we're not gonna be doing that.
I was just showing an amount, what was the amount, Pete? Yeah, I was just showing a amount.
I got three hundred and twenty-six thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay.
And that is an actual quote for that project. I have, uh, two other quotes that were bid on the same project, um, the second one was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, and the one that I really want to emphasize to you tonight is the third one, that is ninety-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And, uh, basically, I mean, this is a project that I've been trying to, to get taken care of for, for a couple of years now and get it through, because I think it's important. We've installed some real high-efficiency chillers at Washington, yet we're using old cooling towers, and then to me it's like putting used oil in a brand-new vehicle, you know? We're defeating the purpose of the efficiency of the chillers by not addressing the cooling towers. Uh, and there is, I think there is a way, I know funding and all, that's a, a big issue, but I think the way that we can do that is another item that you have on your sheet is the pneumatic valves for Washington High School. That is, that has been on the capital, uh, projects for, I think, a couple of years, I remember when it first was introduced, and I think you guys are holding on to that money for different reasons, but anyway, that's, that's ninety-eight thousand dollars. And so if you look at the low bid that I've got here, and then basically, um, there's two ways of doing it, we got, one of the reasons the bid's low is because it was a different brand of tower. The tower that we have there is Baltimore Air Co., for whatever reason, their towers are more expensive than the Marley brand, which is the other quote, and so you're looking at, uh, seventy, seventy-two thousand dollars to replace the two towers, or just, just the tower is seventy-two thousand dollars, whereas a Marley tower, both of them is forty-eight thousand dollars, so a significant difference in the price of them there. But anyway, if we go with the Marley tower, and, uh, that could be installed, both of them can be installed for ninety-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I will also say that, uh, on top of that, quotes the tower, but there is a feature, there's some added things that we can add to that, uh, but I wouldn't recommend doing but one, and that would be putting handrails and a ladder on the towers for safety reason, you know, I wouldn't want our maintenance guy getting up there on the top of that tower and being able to fall off of it. So that's, that is an added expense on these, which is like, uh, fifty-four hundred dollars, twenty-seven hundred dollars per tower, so it's not a big added cost of that. So if you add that feature to the towers, the Marley towers, we're looking at a hundred and one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And then, of course, you gotta add tax to that, so we're looking at a hundred and eight thousand dollars, taxing everything, so that's ten thousand dollars. If, to me, the pneumatic valves at Washington is not that critical. Uh, I know it was put in the budget, uh, I think Danny Willard did that, and I'm not exactly sure why that was put in there at the time, but, uh, I mean, to me, as, as far as priorities and critical issues, the cooling towers supersedes that by far.
Do I, can I speak to that? Yeah, because that, the ninety-eight thousand is part of the enclosure money.
Pete, the ninety-eight that's there was pulled out as, to try to come up with the money to secure the three hundred thousand for the Eastern enclosure, and when that project is finished, if it comes in at what we, close to what we budgeted, that ninety-eight won't be there anymore.
We have most is twenty-five.
We, we'll, we'll know when that project is complete, what we've got to work with. Now, we do have some capital fund balance, but we, I don't know what the exact figure is on that now, but that ninety-eight, a good portion of that likely will go toward that enclosure. When we were talking earlier this week, I had thought about that, where we have that sitting out there for.
What, according to Stan's figures, what we were looking at is that twenty-five we just mentioned, but we won't know until the project's done, so what we, the only thing I know we can do is keep these figures, and I wrote down everything Pete was saying, everything Pete was saying, keep these figures here in mind. And once these projects are done, see where it shakes out at. Because we won't know until we're through with it. And see how much money we do have left. Then we can come back and make a decision on it. Is that fair enough?
It is.
I mean, I don't know any other way to approach it.
No, and I think as we look through this lighting, Pete and I talked this week, lighting upgrades need to be done and building envelope issues are critical. And, you know, there's not a source of that kind of money. And we're talking about a couple million dollars. So I don't know if it's a special request that we make to the commissioners or if we look at another performance contract type of an idea. I don't know what the, you know, what the best avenue would be, but those are the pressing needs. But my concern with this is we've got a high-dollar piece of equipment that we purchased at Washington. And we've got to put the material along with it, the types of equipment to help it run the way that it's supposed to. And it may not, we may not get the payback.
And we were told that when we installed these chillers, that we would realize a savings of twenty-two thousand dollars a year for those chillers. But I can guarantee you, we're not getting twenty-two thousand dollars as it's set up now with the inefficiency of the cooling towers. So we're defeating the reason we installed them like that, I think.
Well, plus, we don't want to do anything that's going to harm what we've already done.
That's right. And I actually asked the guy, and he didn't get back with me today, but these are very high-efficiency, very expensive compressors. They're oldest bearings, there, there's no oil involved in this. I mean, it's suspended magnetically in the shaft. And this thing is spinning at thirty-five thousand RPMs. And they're very sensitive to water temperature in the tower. It has to be, you know, kind of a stable environment there. And when we get these hot days like we had last week, and we've had those chillers lock out several times, and that's really not good for those chillers. But we'll have you a figure, because I want to know myself personally what one of those compressor will cost that we had to replace. And it's probably going to be up there pretty expensive.
Well, and hopefully if we can go in and get on to Eastern Enclosure, we'll have some more idea for our own self too, how much money we have, so. But I appreciate it. That's what we needed to know. Thanks, Pete. So that carries us back to the original idea to sum this up. We need to just take a look at the sixteen seventeen capital, what Don's presented. If that's what you want to do, we need a motion to move on. Everything that was highlighted.
I move that we go with the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to second and everything that's in highlights, that's what we'll be approving. Any last questions?
Before the vote?
Yep, yep.
One quick question. Where you've got, oh, system-wide painting and system-wide asphalt repair, oh, I mean, like system-wide asphalt repair is twenty grand. And I mean, if you're not looking at doing one project, you're going to just go out and try to patch.
We're going to try to patch what we have, to try to fix the bad potholes, have a professional company to come in and undercut them, backlay it, put the fabric down and put them back. We're just estimating to do some at each campus. Got a bad one at northeast, bad one at Northside. And DOT is going to come in and help us on the bus entrances. So we're just paid doing the student and the public entrance. Potholes and repairs at five of the schools.
The motion I just made, I want to make sure I'm making the right motion. And that is we are staying firm with our commitment to the safety arc that we agreed with the county commission.
It continues on there exactly the way it was presented to them.
Okay, I'm okay with it. Everything that's highlighted, which shows four sixty-six spent on safety and security, four hundred on technology, and then a hundred and twenty-three on these various projects. That's what we're looking at approving right now. Is that your motion?
That's it.
Okay. And I had a second?
Yes.
Okay, any last questions? One more time? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? Okay, now you've got it. Move forward. Yeah, you want to give us some information on custodial contracts? Or action, not information, it shows an action item, but...
Dr. Phipps and I, I've basically been working on the due diligence, looking at RFP and doing it. And what I would like to do tonight is request an extension to the next board meeting for us to finish our due diligence.
And with Matt, with a couple of references, in fact, Stan and I were trying to make contact today. We just cannot get up with, left five messages for, and we want to come back to you with references. But to be able to continue on with what we need, we still need to have custodial services. So we would request allowance to continue on with the contract that was in place with Image for the month of July and August to get the custodial supplies taken care of that we need. And then we would change the dates of the contract to be the first of September. And for whatever term we had originally.
Do you need a motion for that?
Will Image continue on a monthly basis?
Yeah, I was going to say.
I've called him this afternoon and he said he would continue on a monthly basis until we could make a decision.
Okay.
And that would be thirteen thousand, five oh nine, forty-eight a month.
You got to have the supplies. So I said, do you need a motion to continue on?
Yeah, I think we need to have that to be able to pay the approval.
Got a motion to second. I think you've all understood it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Graduation dates? I think it's, yeah, graduation dates.
We do, folks need to go ahead and plan to work on these. You'll see those printed, but for the public, early college, high school graduation will be on May the nineteenth at the multipurpose room, building ten, Community College at seven o'clock. And we're going to do something different this year. All of our other high schools are going to graduate on the same day. It's going to be on a Saturday. And it's going to be June the tenth, which would be the day immediately following the last day of school for students. And we will have the time and location will be announced later, but we're going to, we're going to work those out so that those of us that attend will have enough time to get to the different locations. But folks that are just going to graduation at a particular school will just be there at the appointed time and be able to take care of it. We'll be able to handle the graduations all in one day. Have had several requests, it's something we've tried to do for a variety of reasons, haven't been able to work it out. But public request to do this and then my desire to get it done on one day, we're going to try it this year and see how it works.
Principals, principals buy into this?
Yeah.
So am I going to get in trouble with anybody if I say I really like this idea?
I like it, Ted. I like it. I mean, I like it.
Yes, I've been shooting for this for a while, but I didn't think anybody would agree to it.
Are you going to try to do it on one location? No. They'll be at the regular, where they normally do their graduations. And those of us that go, we'll go to those locations. So we don't have to worry about any kind of, you know, changes in terms of the venue or anything like that.
But this takes out that graduating one week and waiting a week, I mean, not graduating, finishing school one week and waiting a whole week for some schools to graduate.
Yeah.
That's, this is a much better idea.
I think it's easier for family to get there on a Saturday than it is during the middle of the week.
Absolutely. And there will be a lot of time for us to make it from one to the next.
That's right. Yeah, we'll make sure there's plenty of time built in.
Thanks to all the principals for agreeing to this. Or thanks for going along with it whether you liked it or not. Any other questions right quick? If not...
Does he need?
Okay.
Since that's under action, do we need to...
Yes, we need to approve this.
Do we do that?
We haven't done it yet. I'm waiting for a motion.
Motion's over.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's when we're going to have graduation. Thank you. I love that. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot eleven A one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one one five C dash three twenty-one and student records under General Statute one one five C dash four oh two and twenty U.S. Code twelve thirty-two G.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session.
I'm voting individually, each one.
Okay, we're back in open session and the first order of business is to approve the personnel agenda dated today.
Some of them, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. Calendar?
Ooh, I haven't done it.
I think it's just the dates we already have, right? Set up, August.
All right.
Yeah, I'm showing you.
With that special call meeting on the twenty-second to deal with any last-minute personnel for any hires that we got, that'll be very, very short.
Note that time, folks. Eight AM.
Who came up with that?
Well, he said we had to do it before they go to work.
You've got to go to work.
Any board member updates? Okay, superintendent updates.
Just want to let folks know this, we are obviously in August getting ready for schools to start back. We'll have the Stuff the Bus campaign will be on August the twentieth. And then early college starts school this week and our students go back to the year-round schools on the twenty-ninth of August. So we're planning for that and look forward to a great year coming up.
Can't go back into closed session, can you? Next time? Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Got a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
the generous contributions of the county commissioners.